All right, we want to welcome you to the NAMI Clackamas County Commissioner Candidate Forum. Thank you all for being here. This is not only for the audience of those of you who showed up in person, but this is being broadcast live and will be on our NAMI Clackamas YouTube channel as well as on the local cable access channel for Willamette Falls TV. So, we have, we invited all 10 of the county commission candidates. You can see we have three different seats up this year, the chair and positions three and four. These are the candidates who are here. We may have one or two still coming in late, we shall see. For those of you who are not aware of NAMI Clackamas, we're the nonprofit organization that provides support, education, and advocacy, both for people living with mental illness as well as their family members across our county. You can learn a lot more at our website, which is up on the screen, or at our table, which is out in the lobby. This is our format for today. We're going to have, give candidates each an opportunity to give opening statements of one minute, which is going to be challenging for any of us to speak in one minute or less. And then we'll have, we have several of our NAMI Clackamas board members here who will pose questions to the candidates. And we'll just go left to right and right to left. And each of the candidates will have a minute to answer each of those. And then they'll have a one-minute closing statement. They also do have campaign materials out in the lobby if you want to check out each of the candidates. We're given the opportunity to bring some materials with them. These are the 10 candidates and you can see they're seated by the different positions for which they're running. So, we thank the candidates for being here. We know this is a busy time of year for you. And I'm going to turn it over to our host here from Providence, Renee Butine King.
Good morning. It's great for the community to be able to have this space to be able to come to for community events. It's unusual for us to be hosting a political event. So, I did want to mention that Providence and NAMI as nonprofits are bipartisan. We don't actually endorse any one particular candidate, but we do endorse being able to have the conversation around mental illness and behavioral health. It is a huge healthcare concern for all of us and this should be a good conversation today. So, thank you very much for coming and for engaging with these people and hopefully we'll have some good solutions down the road. Thank you.
So, we're going to ask you to hold your applause today, except for right now. Please welcome all of our county commission candidates. All right, and to begin with opening statements, we'll start at the far end and begin with Tina Irvine. You have one minute.
Not sure. Oh, yeah, there we go. Okay, so I'm Tina Irvine and I just wanted to thank you all for being here today on this Saturday morning. I owned and operated a large staffing firm in here in the county for 10 years. During that time, I put roughly 10,000 people to work and placed those individuals at small, medium, and large companies across this county. In addition to running that highly successful business, I simultaneously worked for the Board of Directors for the Children's Center, Clackamas Workforce Partnership, Oregon City Rotary, and also Bob's Red Mill. It was during that time that I was going before the Board of County Commissioners that I was prompted that I wanted to take both my nonprofit and business experience and elevate that to becoming a commissioner. That was back in 2020. I learned quickly that I needed more time to plan and prepare. So, that is why I'm running now here today. Again, I just wanted to say thank you and I am Tina Irvine.
Hi, thank you so much for being here and thank you, NAMI, for doing this. I'm a big advocate for, for mental health and taking down the stigma of mental illness. So, I am Ray Gordon. I'm running for Clackamas County Commissioner Four. And in 2005, I was hired by the Clackamas County Tourism Department to market this beautiful county we live in. And I got a chance to learn and know all the streets and all the small businesses and all the rural and, and urban areas. And it was amazing. I left to be a full-time musician and part-time marketing consultant owning a company. And I had five years of, of great times and, and great growing experiences, helping small businesses to thrive. And then COVID hit and everything went away. And so, I came back to the county to work in disaster management for COVID real, as a temp. And I realized that things had not gotten better and I wanted, I wanted to serve.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Fireside and I'm running for county commission position four. I want to first thank NAMI so much. Okay, we'll try this one. So, I'm running for county commissioner position four because I'm invested in Clackamas County. I have a young child in public school in Lake Oswego. I own a small company here. And I believe that the work that I've done on the county boards and commissions have prepared me to step up into this role. I believe that we have an opportunity to enhance our vital social services as well as champion working class values. We have very serious issues facing our county over the next four years. We need to make sure that we are shepherding our SHS dollars to get them out the door and meet the needs of people in real time. We need to implement our revisions to Measure 110 and enhance our recovery-oriented system of care. I am, again, proud of the work that I've done and above all, I would be honored to be your next commissioner in position four. Thank you.
We're sharing this one? You can hear me. Well, I just want to first welcome one of my close friends and mentors, Ed Lindquist and Sandy Lindquist. You were one of my mentors years ago before I was a commissioner and you taught me a lot. So, welcome and I'm so happy to see you here today. I'm Clackamas County Commissioner Martha Schrader. I'm the sitting commissioner here. I have to tell you, I'm enjoying these forums because what I'm finding out is I'm becoming like friends with the people running against me and with me. It's, it's a great experience to do this. And it's nice to keep things cordial and positive as you move through because campaigning is tough work. Just a little bit about what I've done in the past. I was one of the founding members of the Children's Center. Back in the day, served on the Board of Clackamas Women's Services. I'm currently serving on the Grand Round Community Fund where we had our meetings with the tribes yesterday. And I'm looking forward to talk to you about our recovery work in the county. Thank you.
Hello, I am Dana Hindman Allen. I'm running for Clackamas County Commissioner Position Three. And I actually ran in 2022. I'm a local Realtor. I'm involved in the community. I have been on the park sport since 2021. I have a bachelor's in human development, so I'm very much looking forward to the. Oops. Okay, sorry. Anyhow, I really am running because I want to return the collaborative spirit to government. I think that there's been some aspects of government that have not been really forthright in, in considering the public's viewpoints. And it's a lot of viewpoints, the perspectives that people have, the diverse perspectives. And I want to be that positive force to, to get the really hard work done and put aside any sort of misnomers. And I want to be that positive aspect on the board. So, I am a lifelong Oregonian, fifth generation, and I truly love this county. I've raised my children here. I have a lot of experience with. Thank you. One minute and a microphone off the hook.
Does this one work over here? All right, well, good morning. My name is Craig Roberts and I'm your former sheriff and I'm running for Clackamas County Commission Chair. I want you to know I care deeply about this county. I care about the people that live here and I care about the county employees. I want you to know I'm extremely concerned about the financial health of Clackamas County due to the construction of the new courthouse. And I'm concerned about the impact it's going to have on services. I will tell you, there is a financial tsunami headed our way and the numbers just don't add up. Because of the limited time here, I want to just go into just a few things that I've done in my career to help improve system-wide improvements around mental health. I hired the first mental health person to work in our patrol division. Helped those struggling with mental illness. I started the first CIT training in Clackamas County. Expanded drug and alcohol treatment beds to 80 beds with an 88% success rate. I led the charge on a statewide effort to improve safety in our schools for those committing suicide called Safe Oregon. I purchased two homes for the mentally ill, one for adults and one for women. I'm looking forward to the questions and can't cover everything, but thanks for the opportunity to be here today.
Hi there, my name is April Lambert and I would like to share with you why I'm running for county commissioner. It's in response to Shoal's decision to close down our Office of Equity and Inclusion in Clackamas County. I want to restore trust in our community. It's been broken. There are many important laws in place such as the Americans with Disability Act and the Equal Opportunity Act that are designed to protect our workforce and consumers from discrimination. Unfortunately, without proper training, companies are at risk for fines and lawsuits from these very important laws. I have a solution to that and that's to provide free, on-demand training to every licensed business in their workforce here in Clackamas County on these important topics. Let's restore equity in a big way while protecting our businesses, their workforce, and their consumers. I'm here to restore the voice of Clackamas County. A vote for me is a vote for you. Thank you so much.
Okay, now he makes me get on stage. That's okay. I am Ally Lynn Foot. I am the board president for NAMI. So, I want to thank you all for being here and I have the pleasure of asking the first question. And this question, we'll start with you, April, and we'll just work our way down. So, if you could, please share any personal experience knowing a family member, a friend, or a colleague with a mental illness? And what have you learned from that experience?
Do I have one minute?
It is the timer. One minute, yes.
So, severe and persistent mental illness runs in my family, including my father. So, I grew up with a dad who suffered from mental illness, who was in and out of my life. And I, I learned a lot from that. I learned about love, patience, understanding, and the importance for the need for quality behavioral health care. I serve in behavioral health care. I've served right now as a supported employment specialist on a collaborative mental health team. I help people restore their lives and have equity in the workforce. It's something that really matters to me. Thank you so much, NAMI, for what you do.
Well, it's a great question. And I think you can just look around the room. And mental illness touches all of us, myself and my family as well. And I will just tell you that, that I am going to be brutally honest. I wish I could say it's different, but I will say the system has been a failure. If you look back 20 years from now, do you think it's better? And I challenge us all, I don't believe it is. I believe we need to step up. We're 50th in the country for drug and alcohol treatment. Are you serious? And, and being in public safety for this long, waiting for this to change, I'm tired of waiting. I want to hit the ground running. I can make those changes and we can improve our response to those that are struggling with mental illness. It is truly a tragedy. You just drive down Portland, you can drive in the streets and it is impacting all of us. And we can do so much better. So, thank you.
I have personal experience with people that suffer with mental health and illness. And they can be debilitating at times. And you learn strategies on how to help and how to help and support somebody closest to you in your life. And it can be challenging. And oftentimes, it's the cause of the condition of why people end up homeless or why people end up struggling in addiction because really it's an untreated mental health issue. So, I am very grateful for the outreach services that are happening. And I, I, I truly feel for people and myself because I have dealt with people in my life very close that really struggle and they try to, to self-regulate and it's very hard. And it can be challenging to tackle those around them. So, I'm grateful that the stigma of mental health, mental health holders is starting to diminish and that is a very positive step in the right direction.
Yeah, these mics are something else. Well, my personal story is my younger brother and he is a recovering addict and alcoholic. And it was very difficult growing up with him largely because I didn't, wondered if my parents were as aware as I was that he was doing drugs and, and drinking so heavily. He, he did work his way through recovery. We have a good relationship today. His wife has been a fantastic support for him in a way that he really needed to recover. I also have a sister who has issues with severe hoarding and is sunk into dementia. I wouldn't say that's mental illness, but certainly it puts people in a position where we have to find the care for him. My brother was able to do it and we are working with my older sister now to make sure she gets the care she needs in the place where she lives in Illinois.
Since the age of 18, I have been a caregiver and guardian for my mother who suffers from mental illness and alcoholism. I have had to navigate the incarceration system with her. I have had to navigate the rehabilitation system with her. And most of all, I have had to ensure that she has a life with dignity and is integrated into our family in a way that she feels that she can thrive and that she has a purpose and that my son, who is eight, can enjoy his, his Gigi. And in those moments when they're together, I get a glimpse of that mother who I had when I was his age. And so, it has impacted my life greatly. It has informed my advocacy. And above all, it has made me focus on how important it is that mental illness and mental health among our seniors be advocated for. And I'm very, very blessed that we have an amazing social worker with her right now who helped me get through the Medicaid process, get her a bed that was in Clackamas County. And again, so that she can be an integrated part of our family. Thank you.
Well, first I want to commend her for being open. That's what we need to do is be open about struggles with mental illness so that people feel more comfortable with coming forward. So, I got introduced to NAMI through a family-to-family class. How many of you guys know what the family-to-family class is, right? It was amazing. And the one thing that I got out of there to help my cousin was that to take the stigma off and the one thing that really stuck with me was your heart is an organ, right? And when it's having problems, people gather around. Your brain is an organ. And to just keep that in mind, they're both organs and we both need to do the stigma and take that off. Also, I am amazed about 50% of people will be, will be diagnosed with mental illness. And I think a lot of people use drugs to cover up mental illness and to deal with it. And we need to address that, especially in our homeless population and make counseling affordable and accessible. Thank you.
So, I, I always like to think back 45 years. And, you know, growing up in a biracial family, it was often taught to us at a very young age that we don't share our family secrets and we don't air our dirty laundry, nor do we seek psychiatric help. And I had a brother who really struggled in adolescence and it carried on well into his adulthood. He ultimately was not able to stay in our household because of his behavior issues. So, subsequently, he self-medicated and sadly died of drug overdose last year. And so, for me, I think early intervention is absolutely essential and also reducing the stigma and shame within families that come with behavioral health and, and mental illness.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good morning. I'm Mary Clark and I'm the NAMI Clackamas Secretary and I also have been coordinating the NAMI Wellness Classes in Clackamas County Jail. So, my question is, Clackamas County's rate of suicide deaths is higher than many other counties and higher than the national average. Suicides are particularly high among our children and youth. What actions will you take to reduce and prevent suicide? And let's start with Tina, please.
Thank you. So, one of the things that I've been able to glean and learn in my 20 years of working within this county is, I don't know if you guys know Tiffany, but she is, works with Providence. And one of the things she shared with me in many conversations we've had is that families really still struggle with what to do with their children when they're having these behavioral health and mental health issues. They just are at their wits' end. They know their schools are struggling with them, its teachers, their peers are struggling with them. And these parents were forced to just basically drop their kids off at the emergency room and abandon them in the sense that they just didn't know what else to do. So, Providence was able to build an inpatient facility right up there at Willamette Falls that really helps support that behavioral health and mental health support. And those are the types of centers that we need to continue to invest in here at the county for our youth and for our adults.
All right. That is a really good question and something that we should all embrace. Suicide is, is, is not a victimless crime, of course. When somebody commits suicide, I've known a few people that have, it, it just leaves ripples for years and years. I was talking to somebody recently who, who wasn't able to access services for her husband and he unfortunately decided to take his own life. So, so prevention is, is, is total key as well as getting people the services they need. Sometimes it's hard to get counseling and to pay for it. I mean, myself personally, I always tell people when I'm doing counseling because I want to model that behavior and that there's strength. There is strength in saying you need help. So, early intervention and that's what I would do.
Thank you. I think one of the most important aspects, having navigated mental illness is that there needs to be immediate access. And so, there could be one moment where, you know, my mom was lucid enough to say, yes, I would get treatment and five seconds later, she would not. And if she did not have immediate entry into those facilities, there were moments where I had to, you know, go other routes and use emergency rooms and, and navigate those things that are not helpful for someone actually experiencing a mental health crisis. In addition, when we're looking at our youth, we have to partner with our schools and the counselors and the social workers within the county to ensure that our students have, again, immediate access to support and services when they are in crisis. And above all, I think it's a message that we can send that as a community, that your life is valuable and the way that we do that is prioritize our budget to ensure that mental health is a priority and access to care is a priority for everyone.
Well, I'd like to mention something quickly that we're already doing as a commission to tackle this. And basically, community members that are experiencing a behavioral health crisis, oftentimes suicidal, including young folks, have no place to go. And I actually visited all the major hospital systems in our county. That includes Kaiser, Providence, Legacy Systems, to visit their emergency areas to get a firsthand conversation with what that was like for them as people who were being dropped off. And out of that, with my colleagues, we have come up with what we call a 23-hour stabilization center. It's work that we are doing with Malcolm McDonald, who's captain in our sheriff's office, Mary Rumbaugh, who's our Behavioral Health Division Director, and Adam Brown, who, and Vaheed Brown, who do housing. So, we're looking at it from a three-pronged approach. At this point, it looks as if we're going to be opening a center in Milwaukee at McBride. And that is a big deal for our county because as we said, people don't have immediate access.
In working with our youth, I actually have experience. I worked for 11 years as an educational assistant. And I think the key with our youth is having early identifiers in place. We need to know what we're looking for to be able to assess a behavioral health and mental health crisis so we can stave it off before somebody gets to a point where they're, they're beyond reach. And I think the early intervention is key to be able to do that. So, I think being aware, first of all, and having that early approach with, with our youth and assessing the, the children and understanding that we need to have that coordination factor in place between the partnerships, the school, the counseling centers. We need to have the advocacy in place with our youth so we know we have those resources accessible. So, thank you.
Hi, this is one thing I feel like I'm uniquely qualified. I was invited back to Washington DC by President Obama to be a part of a think tank. We had teachers from Virginia Tech, Sandy Hook. And I'll tell you what, I came back completely shocked about what's happening in our country. And to lead the charge to create a legislative task force called Safe Schools Task Force in Oregon. And one of the things that we found out real quickly with key leaders around the table is that youth were taking their own lives. They were committing self-harm in outrageous numbers. And the one thing we looked at is across this country is some best practices. And the best practices is kids have to have a platform to report on other kids. They do care about other kids. And as soon as we finally got that platform live, I can tell you, we began to reduce youth suicide. So, that's just one of the many things that I've done. I'd be happy to talk to you privately afterwards more about that. Thank you.
Thank you for this question. Suicide prevention needs to begin with education. And what I mean by that are providing children and parents and providers skills way before we ever get there on how to handle their emotions, how, what to do when something hits you so hard that it feels hopeless. Because without skills, children are alone in these difficult moments and they don't know what to do. So, we need to make sure that we not only train, but we train and we train and we train and we train and we train until it gets into memory. Because when things get into memory, it's why we have commercials that go over and over and over again, right? So, people will remember it. Oftentimes, because I've been, I've worked in education, we come out and we train people on important topics and, and I'll wrap up. But if I tell you this one time, great idea, and then forget it. So, we need to get in, get these skills solid via support. And I agree, have places for kids to be able to report what's going on because it's oftentimes the friends who are aware of it, not the parents. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Steele and I've been involved with NAMI for many, many years. And I think that's a good idea. They wanted me to speak. Okay, you two first. Okay. Okay, good. They want, maybe, maybe if you turn that one off, that would be good. Anyway, they wanted me to speak loud enough. Now I'm speaking doubly loud. Anyway, I've been on the board for a number of years as well. Ah, good. I've been on the board for a number, well, I'm just going to have a little tune to this. I've been on the board for a number of years as well. And so, maybe if I stand back, I don't know. I, I am very interested in the fact that we're talking a lot about substance abuse and addiction. And that's, and we're, we're looking at that as a major crisis, which it is. But what about the people who But what about the people who have a mental health crisis? That is also a crisis. And what are we doing beyond that? Also, would you mind if I did one thing? There is something that was said that really bothered me. My daughter died from suicide. When you use the word "commit suicide," it makes it sound like a crime. It's not a crime. It's a result of a mental illness. They killed themselves, they died by their own hand, any other way you want to say it, but please refrain from using "commit." So what would you do about mental health crises that's hitting us beyond addiction and substance abuse? And would you like to start, April?
Mom in trouble. Where do you want to start? Thank you.
Okay, so as I have already mentioned, I serve for Clackamas County in the Behavioral Health Center. My vision is to expand our resources. They are profitable and they are so incredibly necessary. I have talked about this over and over and over again. Under my leadership, we will be investing in more providers. Currently, we have a beautiful building that's in Lake Road that they just opened. However, it's not even fully constructed. We're having to share offices, which lets you know that we can expand in the remote access if needed. It's incredibly important. Yes, we need to be having crisis. We need to provide services, not just for the people who we are serving, but for their families, to understand what is our loved one experiencing? How can they be a support to them? And what is the best that they can do? I could go on for hours and I say I have 15 seconds about the expansion that we will be doing because, again, it brings in revenue. Hello? Why would we not be doing more? Thank you.
Hi, this is one of the things that's also dear to my heart, drug and alcohol treatment and dual diagnosis and getting people out of the jail. And I fought hard to do that because that is not the right place for them. And during my tenure, we were able to create an 80-bed drug and alcohol treatment program. We learned I can't fix your problems in 30 days. Takes 12 to 18 months. It takes us moving you into clean and sober living. It takes us moving people into homes that are oftentimes have a house manager that helped them move on in life. Our success, we've learned that medicated assisted treatment helps our success rate. It also is important, really, that we expand the program. I can only do it for high-risk offenders. I'd have parents calling me on a regular basis wanting to get into our program because it wasn't big enough. So I believe we need to move to non-justice-involved treatment and use that.
Well, I think that, back to being aware, we need to be aware and we need to have the resources present. So if somebody is struggling with that, they know where to go. And so if we're having that at the forefront of advocacy, I think that that's a huge step in the right direction. I know that, and this is just a touch on, my father died of alcoholism, but it rapidly turned into mental health issues. And because of his alcoholism, it just really was devastating. So I needed to find the resources to try to help my dad when he did have those moments, when he wanted to get help in mental health because he was having a crisis. And so I think knowing the outlets, where are the outlets? So if we, I mean, that's really the key, is knowing where to go. So I think really being aware and having a public policy and public advocacy out there in the community is key to be able to get the resources that we need.
Yeah, and I think you're speaking about things like deep depression, schizophrenia, all those kinds of things that oftentimes people, you know, I have a close friend actually whose brother is schizophrenic and I talk to her all the time about what she has to do with him. But what I think the real issue is, is we don't have enough facilities, either in the immediate moment to get people what they need and then once they are stabilized, the default is usually the emergency room when someone's having it. At one point, we did invest in a place called Unity, which was supposed to be, Rich, you were there when we did that, that was supposed to help with that. It was a coalition of the three hospital systems to try and move people just from an ER actually into a center where they would get the treatment. We need more of that, we need more resources for that. And it is one of the key things that our county is working on, not just me, but my other colleagues who are commissioners as well.
I think one of the things that the county commissioner's done really well is committing to a recovery-oriented system of care. And what that means is that there's multiple entry points. Whether or not someone has, you know, offended to get services, that's not the focus. The focus is if you are experiencing a mental illness, a mental health crisis, you have an opportunity to enter the system. And one of the amazing things that the commissioners have committed to is building a recovery campus. And so we know that multiple stages of entry and multiple opportunities for entry points is how we can address mental illness because it doesn't just happen gradually. It can be just at that moment. And there has to be multiple ways for people to receive services. And above that, there's a lot of intergovernmental cooperation that has to happen in order for mental illness to be a priority throughout our state. And so while the county commissioners can use their SHS dollars and do the things that we have for allocation, the bottom line is we have to be lobbying our legislature and we have to demand that our state make mental illness a priority. Thank you.
That is such a great question. And the first answer is to vote in people that are not afraid to have that conversation. And that's important is we need people to be open and willing to have the conversation about mental illness and mental health. I think it's really important that we do invest in having accessible counseling. And another thing that I've been talking about, especially with the homeless situation, is that we need family mediation. And currently, Clackamas County has mediation services. And having them in conjunction with mental health and counseling services to build those bridges, not saying that the family will bring their relative back into the home, but they need to know where they are in their journey. And I think it all starts with voting in people that will care and have that conversation.
So one of the things that I'm thankful for is the ability to problem solve.
I'm Deanne Barnett, I've never been accused of not speaking. I do follow a lot though, so it's on you. I loved what you just said because it leads into my question. There is a mobile response team called 988, you're just on 988, and you get these people. I have two parts. Do you support this? There are unarmed mental health professionals that respond to mental health crisis. My daughter has used this service a number of times. Will you prioritize allocating more resources to fund more mobile response teams to keep up with the growing demand? And you basically answered that question, but I'm starting with you anyway.
No worries. So again, I'm Tina Irvine and yeah, absolutely, I support this. I think one thing is awareness and bringing more people to understand that we have a 111, it's just 988. And I think that that's something that the county can continue to push out in messaging so that everybody understands, just like we grew up learning, 911 gets you emergency help, 988 gets you emergency response for your behavioral or mental health crisis that's going on. I think we always, as a county and as leaders, need to be investing in things that support the essential services when people need them most, whether that is healthcare, whether that's behavioral health, whether that's food services, whatever those needs are, when somebody is in crisis, they need support. And as a region that has millions of dollars as revenue coming in, we need to make sure that we're allocating those to the things that are going to support people when they need it.
All right. First, I want to say, mental health is a foundation to anything we do, everything. If we don't have good mental health, we-
...a really amazing model called Kahoots, which is in Eugene. And I can see that the dedication that the folks that work there and the city government and the county government have put into those resources. But oftentimes, even if you have an emergency response, sometimes you don't have anywhere to go. And so it's not just one thing, it's the whole thing. And so when we talk about a recovery-oriented system of care, it is all of those things. It's multiple entry points. It's crisis response. It's ensuring that the people who are experiencing a crisis have, you know, the opportunity to have a dignified response and not just a Band-Aid. And one of the things I will say again about the commission that they have done is in our 911, there's also a medical triage. So they're able to say, oh, okay, well, do we need to send an ambulance or what kind of ambulance do we need to do? Oftentimes, when you're navigating a crisis, maybe you won't remember 988, maybe you'll walk on 911 anyway. So all of those coordinations are super important and I am very thankful that our commission, as far as the triage goes, has supported that. Thank you.
I want to thank you for mentioning that because, yes, we are working on a recovery system of care and you explained it beautifully and you do your homework for sure. What I wanted to mention about this, we do have a mobile team. I know, Rich, you've been aware of that. Mary Rumbaugh, who is our Director of Behavioral Health, they actually are the response team that goes out to these particular calls. We also on 82nd have a stabilization center. Used to be called, I can't remember, called Crossroads? What was it? Cornerstone, yeah. They kept changing the name on that. So that's another area, really, where we have that option for people to go there, get stable immediately and have that immediate service. And I know that I am committed, with my colleagues as well, to take the dollars, our state dollars to community mental health services and continue to put it towards those kinds of things. Also, we used to embed, Craig, I don't know if we do that anymore, I'd like to see that happen. We used to have a mental health specialist working directly with the sheriff's department. So someone was on call and our sheriff had to respond to that kind of, our deputies had to respond to that. Went over, sorry.
I absolutely think it's critical to fund our mental health and human services. And we've seen an escalation post-pandemic with, we just went through one of the most harrowing times which affected people in many different ways, for a lot of different reasons. And I think it's pretty clear that it's on the rise. And it's not enough just to have the resources, but we need to know about the resources. And knowing about the crisis unit is not enough to just get there, it's what are we doing to follow up? What programs are we implementing to be able to treat people once they walk in the door? What are they gonna, what's the structure we're gonna put in place? And I think that's really important because you can have a mental health emergency, get there, but then what? And I think the family support piece is huge and helping families navigate that because it is uncharted territory. If somebody's having a mental breakdown, there's a lot of devastation that happens in that process. And how are we going to support the families to be able to help with long-term solutions? So they don't end up on the street and, you know, committing a crime or, you know, not of their own volition because of a mental health breakdown. So thank you.
Hi, well, first and foremost, I absolutely support having immediate response teams out there up. And I want you to know that across Oregon, the Safe Schools Task Force, that was part of the legislation we took forward, was to get funding to have folks be able to statewide to schools that were dealing with kids. I will tell you, it's not enough money. We need way more staff. And so my vision has always been to- So I'm back. It's still not working, so, there, it's back. Right here. So- That there is a place in California called psychiatric hospital and it is an urgent care for the mentally ill. And I brought that concept, I took leaders from this county there, unfortunately, I fell on deaf ears. I believe that's what we need, an urgent care where we can take people and help them get stabilized. So I am in there, thank you.
I absolutely believe in expanding 988. As somebody who, again, has family members who experience severe and persistent mental illness and help customers who do, this is very personal to me. I don't want anybody to be in a mental health crisis and not have the help that they need and be at risk of potentially an injury, right? Our police have tried very hard to address this and sometimes it's more appropriate to be a mental health provider who's out there actually providing the service. It's a beautiful partnership between the both at times. So yes, I very much will support this. It's crucial, it's important. And I also want to say, I do speak very passionately because, again, this matters to me, but I don't want to step on our commissioners' toes in the process of doing so. I do believe that they have tried to invest, there are just more that needs to be done. And as somebody who's working on the front lines, you probably will have me screaming from the front line saying, we need more help here. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Judy Jamison. I'm a board member for NAMI Clackamas. My question is about housing. What do you plan to do as a county commissioner to provide more safe and affordable housing and related services, specifically for people living with mental illness? April, I'm gonna start with you.
Thank you so much for this question. Again, I work in health, housing and human services and so I know the length of wait for people who are currently needing housing and it's a really, really long time. I'm just gonna be honest. Thankfully, there are people who are getting placed and I do love the fact that there is the voucher system to help prevent people from getting there in the first place. What I want to actually start with and talk about is helping people who are currently living on the streets. We need to have safe, starting level, safe, temporary housing. We have to have it, it's crucial. We can't just have people living on the streets with nowhere to go and then try and shove them around, throw away their things and expect that to be okay. We need to have safe camping areas, we need to have transitional housing and we need to have permanent housing. The things that make that possible are making sure that they are affordable and subsidized. We need to be able to have appropriate behavioral health care. We need to make sure that we, my time is done. There are so many things that we need to do, but yes, I have a plan.
One of the things I do is build on what we started. As I mentioned, we purchased two houses for the mentally ill, we put a house manager in there, hugely successful partnership of health, housing, human services. And my goal would be to expand that. The fortunate thing is Governor passed some bills that there is a lot of money. And it is critically important that we are good partners with our cities and we come together to see how we can support our entire county on this effort. You know, it's just not one area. So it is really about bringing everybody together, rallying for those important dollars and making sure that we move forward with some urgency to create this housing, which is, again, long overdue.
I think it's a really good topic. I am a real estate agent, my specialty is homes. And I think when we're talking about the mental health issue and people with substance abuse that are getting into recovery, they've lost structure. And I think just to put somebody in a room and say, okay, now, practice all the skills that you lost. And so I'm actually very proud, and if my mom's watching, she was a president of a homeless coalition and they took people off the street on Whibley Island and they had a fabulous program. And what it was is housing with a mentorship onsite. And so they had like a group home and skills were presented and there was structure that was created, there was accountability and there was mentorship. I think that is a great model and they had a lot of success with it. So you're not just putting a fish out of water, just throwing somebody in, say, okay, now, now, get it together. And it's like, no, 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 no. It allows the structure to wrap around somebody and to help encourage people. So I think that's a fabulous model we could do. So I would look and explore those options and present those to the board. Thank you.
Well, let me just give you a quick thumbnail of what we are. Well, let me just give you a quick thumbnail of what we are actually doing and have done in the past year. This has largely been because of supportive housing services dollars when the measure passed in Metro, and to staff like April, people that work with us as the commission who really get this work done. Twelve hundred people placed into housing, forty-one, over four thousand people prevented from entering houselessness, that's our eviction prevention, eight hundred and sixty-two people who've served in a shelter, and a hundred and fifty units of emergency and transitional shelter has been supported. We also have a first coordinated outreach and safety off-the-streets team. That's a combination with our judges, our DA, and folks like that. We have a coordinated housing access island. We just put 10 million towards a service-enriched resource center in Oregon City that will be a navigation center. And we just gave to our cities 7.25 million to increase housing projects throughout the county, not just in our unincorporated areas. So we're doing quite a bit.
Thank you for this question. I'm extremely passionate about housing. I am a licensed developer, so I work in this area every day. I want to first say that, you know, the county has placed 128 households into rapid housing. Their goal was originally 120. In addition to that, they've expanded their case management services from 6.2 million dollars of an investment to 14.9 million dollars. So there's been a focus on ensuring stability and access to homeownership and, like, that kind of stability across our county. And I also just want to say, I want to echo what Martha said, we did, the county did prioritize and open up grants for 7.2 million dollars worth of investments for our cities within the UGB to ensure that they had access to funding centers. There's some behavioral health case working that's going on, all to ensure that the housing within our cities is driven by local control, because who knows better what the citizens within their cities need than the actual cities themselves. And in addition to that, they've also pushed out another few million dollars to our rural centers that are going to be partnered with Ant Farm, and I think that those, the people that are on the ground actually doing the work are the ones that the county has to prioritize funding. And also, just quickly, the county has also repositioned our HUD portfolio. And so at Hillside Park alone, we've expanded, we've expanded units by 400. So it went from 100 to 500. So we are working very hard to ensure that these dollars get out the door and that immediate access is available.
Thank you. I think, oh, no worries. I think it's definitely a multi-pronged approach. There is a lot of red tape in turning buildings into multi-units, and that's one thing we have to address as well, as well as making sure people do not, do not lose their homes. So since 2005, I've been involved in the city of Oregon City on multiple committees, as well as a neighborhood chair, and I have seen just such a difference from 2005 to now. I don't know how people are gonna do it. I don't know how people are gonna have stability and have independence, and I don't know how kids are gonna learn how to be self-sufficient if they can't have their own, their own place. So we need to work on changing bigger units to smaller units and taking down red tape so that people can build.
So, yeah, I think Clackamas County has really been leading the charge with regards to overcoming the housing deficit that we experienced. There's been a lot of things that have fed into the crisis that we're facing right now. And so some of the things that I want to highlight that's really important to me personally is also making sure that all of the coordinated care access points that we have, our supportive housing dollars are also looking at some of the youth. A lot of people have forgotten that there are thousands of children that are under the age of 18 that are not living at home. They're living in cars, they're living on other people's couches, you know, and a lot of times, it's because they are fleeing bad family situations, and they don't know how to navigate the world that is around them. They may have been in the foster system, and they've exited. So for me, it is really important that we are, continue the great efforts that our commission has currently been making, but also make sure that we're looking at our youth and ensuring that they are taken care of, so that when they become adults, they are not endlessly homeless. That is absolutely critical to me.
Okay. Hi, and Tina, we'll start with you down there. First of all, the most vulnerable, vulnerable citizens with a serious mental health issue are not receiving the support needed to live well in Clackamas County. As somebody who formerly worked in the Clackamas County Behavioral Health Division, I spent 12 years building the peer support system of care for the county, I am curious to know how you would best utilize, one, the expertise of our peer community, and, two, the expertise of our behavioral health staff to inform the work that you all do to address mental health issues in the county. That's how I built the peer support system, was looking towards the community and looking towards the expertise that we have within our county.
Awareness and understanding and knowing that these things are available for people. I will go back to my statement previously, we have a mobile unit, right? My big idea is 111, great, well, we have 988 now, but people don't know that. And so in order for us to access the area of expertise that's in this room and that is across our county, people need to know that these things exist, and bringing awareness is the number one way to do that. So I know that the county has a communications department that helps to funnel information out to its citizens, and so I think it's wildly important that that work continue, but we need to make sure that that's happening at several levels. We can't just post it on Facebook and think everybody already knows. That, that just doesn't work. A lot of people gain information from several different avenues, and repetition matters when it comes to making sure that we're accessing individuals and spreading that wealth of knowledge around. Workshops, television productions that can go out, obviously, social media things are supporting that support work, but we've got to make sure that it's repetition and that we're utilizing the information systems that we have to get everybody to know what's available to them.
All right. That's also a good question. So one thing that I've always honored and respected is people that do in the work and people that have built up programs such as the peer program. And I think not a lot, not enough is done by local leaders to look out at what already is happening and to support what is already happening, rather than build new programs on their own. I think the more that we conserve our, our own time and that we respect time of, that's already been done, and that we could build up what's already there. So that's one thing that I would do, is, is make sure that we know and respect what's already being happen, being hap, that's what's already happening, and definitely build that up. That's one thing that is so important, and, and I think, thank you so much for the, all that you're doing.
The first board and commission I ever served on at the county level was the Mental Health and Addiction Advisory Council. And while I was there, I worked with a collaborative group of people, and what it bottom line always came to, of course, we always wanted more money, right? Like, that was always the request, it was never less. But really, when we got into, into the weeds with, with Mary Rumbaugh, it was about empowering our workforce. So when we empower our workforce specialists to do their work, funds and services get out the door. And the expertise that our health, housing, and human services directors like Vaheed Brown and Adam Brown bring to the table are invaluable, because as commissioners, we have to have the smartest people around us to deliver the assets that everyone needs and deserves in the county. And, you know, all that to say, I think that we have amazing directors, and I think that when they come before the commission, they're coming for an ask, they're coming because they see a need, they're coming because they have a lens and a view and an opportunity for us to support them. And I think that is how we can empower our workforce and ensure that our services are strong. Thank you.
I just want to say, a lot of our money for, a lot of this work comes from the community mental health program dollars in the state. And I just want to address the peer-to-peer thing, because I have to say, that's why we're working with you folks. That's why we work with NAMI, and that's why we work with our other nonprofits in this county to expand what we need to do for people who have these issues. But you're kind of our go-to folks, Dave, for the peer-to-peer. I know you have those programs, I know that you get people there, and I think that one of the reasons I support organizations like NAMI, just not here, but across the country, is because it removes the stigma that people feel, and I think that's a key element of having that peer-to-peer connection. So I would do anything to help support you guys in the future. You're, you're it for us, really.
I will say that wise people seek counsel, and what better way to strategize a problem to bring a lot of really bright, creative people to the table to inform you from the actual work that they're doing? So I am absolutely a collaborator, and I think that it is key to take the expertise of people to be able to really find different ways to approach things. No one person can be all things to all people, so you absolutely have to go out of your purview if somebody doesn't have a purview in whatever the subject matter is. It is wise to seek other people. So I believe that is really how we're gonna move it forward, and I wish government would do more of that where, areas where they do fall short. So I think collaborating across multiple spectrums is really essential. So that is something I do in my personal life. If I don't know something, I value something else that somebody knows. When you succeed, I succeed; when I succeed, you succeed. So that is just my personality and my viewpoint. Thank you.
Well, the peer-to-peer program is absolutely critical and is a wonderful program. One of the things I wanted to mention is, again, by about bringing people together and making sure we're hearing from everybody. And I formed a group called IBUS, Identifying Barriers, Implementing Solutions. I brought all, anybody that had anything to do with mental health together. We went around the room, and I'll tell you what, there wasn't many positive things said. We were looking, what's working well and what isn't? And everybody talked about what was broken. But when we came back together, we started to identify simple, low-hanging fruit that we could do better services for those struggling with mental illness. And I, and that unfortunately went away. I believe it's critically important that we meet regularly to look at what are the services that we can improve and come together to make those happen.
I've always believed that a great general talks to their frontline, and ideally, there's somebody who's also served on the frontline. The peer program is incredible. We work with peers in the behavioral health center, as you know, and as far as who can reach people, peers. That's who can reach people. Do you want to be with somebody who gets it? I sure do. So will I expand? Absolutely. And I understand that your frustration. Clackamas County has amazing behavioral health services, they're excellent, we just don't have enough. There is a mental health crisis across our entire nation. And again, these programs are funded through state and federal dollars. Anybody on the Oregon Health Plan will qualify to receive services. We have a federal health center. It's possible to expand, and again, it brings in resources. Let's just do more of it. Thank you.
I co-chaired the Clackamas County Children and Incarcerated Parents Committee for many, many years, and so this next question is very relevant to the work that we've done on that. Given the growing portion of the county general fund that will be going to pay for debt service on the new courthouse, how will you protect funding for mental health and other key county services? I think we'll start with April, please.
Thank you for this question. I've been thinking about that a lot. Again, the programs that I'm referring to are well-funded. There is revenue that we can be looking at. Oftentimes, you'll look at politicians, and they will look at, how can we cut our budget? And that's important, because we need to be responsible with our resources. But we also need to look at what brings in revenue so we can expand our budget and pay for the important things that maybe we couldn't afford otherwise. I am a daughter of a child, I'm a daughter of a man who was incarcerated. I have served in both jail and prison, because I have a heart for the people who are there. I completely believe in second, third, fifty-five, ten-thousandths chances until people are able to restore their lives and have great lives. And a big part of that is reducing stigma around people who are being incarcerated. If you don't give people employment, what do you think's gonna happen? Really? What do you think's gonna happen? Thankfully, we do have an expungement clinic in our county. Hopefully, those services will continue, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Well, that's exactly why I'm running, because I'm concerned about critical services that are so vital to our county, and that is really why I stepped up. I have to tell you, the courthouse right now is 155 million. $125 million debt service in 2025, $15 million a year for the next 30 years. I want to remind you, while it sounds like we have a lot of money, the overall general fund budget, the overall budget for the county is 1.7 billion, but the general fund is 155 million. So you can see, just looking at the simple math, why I would be so concerned. My goal is to really is to provide a citizen oversight committee that comes in, we have an audit, we really look hard, I bring union members to the table to look at, where are we at and how can we move forward? And my goal is to keep all of the critical services that I can, and that's what I intend to do.
Well, I really don't think we can compromise with our core services, and mental health and human services has served. I know my grandson is severely disabled and actually has some of the core services for his disability. And we cannot afford to let our critical services suffer. So I think that there's no compromise there, so we do need to look at the budget and realize that that is something we all need to come to the table on, because it is absolute infrastructure. So many people rely on those services, so many people need those services, and it's like, our most vulnerable people in our communities, that is what it's for. It's a safety net, and we have to have a compassionate safety net in our community. So I will advocate for that. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the children for incarcerated parents, because I was actually on the ground floor with you folks, and it was Debbie from Malala who came to me and said, "We need to do this for the kids in this county who do it." And we have funded it since then, every year, out of our general fund, and I have gone to the mat for that program, because of the friends I have that work in it, and what it does for children who need that service, because it's difficult to have a parent incarcerated. I will say, Craig and I really don't agree on the budget at this point. We always have a balanced budget. I'd be glad to talk to you about the P3 model. It's too long to explain here and how we are funding the courthouse. We continue to have a balanced budget, we are required by law, and I will tell you that these services, particularly children of incarcerated parents, not on my watch is that gonna go away.
For the past three years, I have served on the compensation board, which reported directly to the budget committee. So I've had my eyes on the budget for many years, and I too share your concern about the $15 million a year that's being cut from our general fund for the next 30 years. You know, $450 million is a lot, right? And I don't think anyone would deny, however, that the courthouse needed to be replaced as well, right? It's not a safe place. So for me, our budget is our values. And one of the reasons that I stepped up to run was because for the past three years, I have seen how much influence the commission does have on, on these, on these programs that actually directly impact the quality of life. And to me, when you're making an investment in people, an investment in their health, an investment in their well-being, that pays dividends years ahead. And so those vital services cannot be cut, because those are not our values. And so we need to ensure that we find a way to, that, so everyone in our county has an opportunity to thrive, and our general fund budget is one of the ways that we do that. And so that's about enhancing our tax base and diversifying opportunities for more revenue to come in, and we have to do that, and we have to be committed to that. Thank you.
All right. Another good question. One thing that I think is being missed in this is, is volunteers. And why I say that is, definitely, mental health and those services cannot be cut, and they need to be increased, like I mentioned about the foundation of a house. I mean, we cannot have that foundation not built. So one thing I would, would really push is to bring back volunteer services, people to go into, to mental health situations, as well as coffee- well as Coffee Creek. Personally, I've been in Coffee Creek to volunteer, I sang. And I just think that those programs are not being put on the higher level. And recently, the volunteer department, one of those programs was cut. And I think that was highly, highly a bad, a bad, a bad move for everybody. Thanks.
So I'm Tina, again, just to remind everyone in the room. And, you know, for me, I think that it's essential that we understand that as commissioners, our job is to keep programs running and support and provide for essential services as well as infrastructure. So yes, we absolutely do have a $1.7 billion budget. A lot of those dollars, we as commissioners don't have control over where they are flowing. I think it's important that we do point out that the courthouse was absolutely essential, y'all, like the things falling into the river. And if you've ever had to go to the courthouse to seek services, your court date could be pushed out months and months because there just wasn't enough room to even serve the population that we have here. So while I understand that it is an infrastructure ticket item, it's really no less or any different than when the sheriff's department needed a new building. We took care of it, and we got it done. And as a county, I think we all believe in taking care of each other, even if it means we have to skim the fat a little bit. But I can also speak for the commissioners that are on the board and say that they will always take care of the things that are absolutely essential to providing services in this county. I firmly believe in that.
Let's see if I can actually speak without the, let's see if I can actually speak without the microphone giving us some feedback. Maybe if I stand over here. How's that? I'm hoping that works. Anyway, I have a question, and it's about a large percentage of people of color experience discrimination in their workplace and in their community. The lack of diversity in the workforce has been found to have a substantial effect on the mental health of employees of color. What policies and practices will you support to improve the workplace inclusion? Tina, could you start with addressing that?
Yeah, so I, as I said, I owned a large firm that put literally 10,000 people to work in this county. So if there's anybody who knows what challenges people face in the workforce, it's me. And I can tell you that the issues around diversity and people of color in particular, they're, one of the things that's ironic to me is, in this state, we have still a very small population of people of color in general. And I can tell you, I've built my life here. I've built my family here. I've built my family, my network, friends, colleagues. And while I could face diversity or face adversity at any turn, I believe that this county loves each other and that we take care of each other. So I understand that there is a mindset that I'm discriminated against because I'm a woman of color. I struggle with that. I've been knocking on doors in this county with people I have literally never met before, and they open their door welcomely. They say hi. They hear me out. And even if we don't always agree on policy, they respect who I am and what I'm trying to do. And I, as a person that worked with thousands of businesses in this county, believe that the business owners and the leadership also care about their employees. So yes, I understand we all have an ism that we could face in our life. But at the same time, I think by and large, this county cares, and they love each other, and they support each other.
All right, another good question. When I worked for the county, I worked for the county for 10 years, and then I came back for two years. I was a leader of the employee group that got together. You guys will recognize the A Team. So I was a chair of that for six years, and we worked really hard to be inclusive. We were pre-DEI, which the, which the commission recently disbanded. So our goal was to build morale and to make everybody feel welcome so that everybody would feel like they had a place in the county in that situation as an employee. We were not just welcoming of different people, of people of color, but people of different, of physical capabilities. So we worked really hard on that. And I, whether you were for the DEI department or not, you cannot negate the fact that people wanted it to be saved. And that's important. We have to hear the voices.
So I think one of the first important parts about when we're talking about diversity is that we know homogenized groups do not make as sound decisions as diverse ones. And I believe that when we are talking about public entities and public government, that you should walk in and see every person, every ability, and every county and every city should have an opportunity to do so. I grew up in San Francisco, and I know that I struggle with this with my son in particular. He's eight. And it is different when you grow up in an area where everyone looks like you, right? And so when you are not empowered to bring your full self to work, then there are issues that can happen. And I will say that the closing of the Equity and Inclusion Office did impact our workforce. I'm proud to have been the only person in this position who's been endorsed by our county workforce. And I will say that their morale and their ability to bring their whole selves to work is extremely important because that means that we, as taxpayers and our constituents, actually get the best work out of them. And so that has to be a priority. Thank you.
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion needs to be reinstated in full force in Clackamas County. And I can't speak for Commissioner Savis, but I think that basically, we were not in favor of the changes that were made. So that's the bad news. The good news is that we still have a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board. And that was going to go away, too. And when I spoke to one of my colleagues about it, who was, I'm assuming was going to be a hard no, I said, but remember that money we gave to the Gambi Center down in Cambie that's largely serving an underserved Hispanic community, and they've needed that for years? And we gave those, that center is fantastic, $600,000 ARPA dollars to expand the services to Hispanic communities grossly been underserved for years. And I said, look, they're doing literacy. They're doing food. They're doing clothing. They're getting, giving kids reading everything that you could do to move up a prosperity ladder. And my colleague, I don't want to mention his name, voted yes to maintain the DEI committee. So that hasn't gone away. I'm still meeting with them, with our clerk on a regular basis. And if things change on the commission, then I'm hopeful that we can have a more visible opportunity once again in Clackamas County on this issue.
First of all, I think that it's clear in our mission statement in the county that we want it to be an inclusive place to work and thrive. And I really think this comes down to a precedence and a culture that's built in the workplace. And if somebody is not feeling comfortable or safe or discriminated against, then we need to have somewhere they can go to talk to people about it to get their needs met. And that can be done through the human services. And again, it becomes an issue of awareness and a safe place to communicate. I don't necessarily think we need to fund an entire different department, but we need to live up to our core values at the county. And I really truly think that, and coming from a person that has a grandson that's disabled, you do look through a different lens, and you see things differently. So I would never want my grandson to feel excluded because of a disability. And so I think it really comes down to a precedence and an ambassadorship that a commissioner can set. And I think that that's the key, is a safe place to communicate if people are not feeling comfortable, and upholding the Equal Opportunity Employment Act. Thank you.
Great. One of the things that I feel is critically important in any organization is your procedures and policies. And at the sheriff's office, for, well, it took me years to get accredited, both for our policies and medically accredited, huge. So I believe it starts with making sure you have the very best policies. Second of all, it starts with training. And then, just as many of my other colleagues up here have said, it's all about relationships. And making sure that there's an open platform for people to come forward where they feel safe, where they feel like they're not going to be criticized or ridiculed for coming forward, and to be supportive. And there are some young ladies I met recently about concerns about the county. And I think it's sitting down with those individuals and being good listeners. And then together, trying to figure out how we can move forward in a healthy, productive way, and really kind of support both of our visions as we want to make things better.
This is exactly why I'm running, because I saw the negative impact that it happened to myself and many people in Clackamas County. I have a solution, and now we have another commissioner in the room, to provide free, on-demand training to every single licensed business in Clackamas County, including things such as the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Equal Opportunity Act. I work for you. I will do this for free. I've worked in workforce development for over a decade. I am the right person to do the job. So here is our opportunity to do something important, because you're right, it does affect our workforce. Why not prepare every single workforce in Clackamas County to do the best possible? So putting it in front of you. I would love to do it. If I get a yes, I can start today. Thank you. At no cost. We'll do it for free. Thank you.
You got a yes so far? Please. So we have time for closing statements by each of our candidates. April, please begin.
I love this community. I live here. I serve here. And I promise you, I will do every single thing I can to represent everyone in our community to have prosperity, respect, and to have a voice. I am here to restore the voice of Clackamas County. And my hope is that the people on our commission will genuinely take me up in my offer, because I have a chance to get that going before even being elected. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you, NAMI. You're amazing. Thank you so much.
Boy, this is a tough one. I'll just be frank, is I worked to death investigations for years. And I dealt with the trauma of families and loved ones, and would look at the whole totality of a situation. And I continued to see that there was a failure in the mental health system. And it literally broke my heart. And I believe we can do so much better. There is money aside. I believe wholeheartedly that we have to be able to have a response 24 hours a day. If someone goes to the hospital, is released, a lot of times, they watch them for a while and let them go. If somebody doesn't follow up within 24 hours, their risk for suicide skyrockets because they've reached out, and they've tried to get help, and they didn't. So that is why I so much believe that we have to have that 24-hour service and a place to take people. And I can make that happen. Thanks.
I am running because I am a skilled communicator, negotiator, and problem solver. I want Clackamas County to have win-win solutions. I do think Clackamas County can do better. I actually have co-authored a federal case civil rights, and I truly want civil rights to be upheld in our communities. I also believe that quality of life could be about five policies away from being diminished. And I want to see quality of life protected in Clackamas County. I believe in strong public safety. I want to deal with the tolling issue that could have financial ramifications on a lot of our citizens if it's to resurrect, which is still under the surface. And I want to make it a better place to live. And I want to be an outreach resource for people that we can come together and we can move Clackamas County forward together and really deal with the issues at hand in a very constructive, creative way. My website is danafororegan.com. Dana F-O-R Oregon dot com. I would be honored to be your next commissioner. Thank you.
Well, I'm your sitting commissioner, and I'm going to ask to come back this go-round for a number of reasons. I saw this county probably through the most unprecedented four years, previous four years that I've ever experienced, between COVID, wildfires, ice storms, all of that. It was one emergency after another. We were in emergency mode. Now we're coming out of that. We're actually into what I call a recovery mode. And what I'd really like to end my tenure as a commissioner with is seeing this recovery center brought together, an oriented system of care that will include recovery as well as work with folks who are having mental illness issues. I've visited a center in Austin, Texas, Haven for Hope. I'm working very hard with my colleagues, Commissioner Savis in particular, as well as Commissioner West, to implement a campus of this kind. And it, for me, it's a lasting legacy that I would like to leave this county, because it's the county I just love the most. So I hope I have inspired you today. I'm going to ask you to support me as in position three. And let me finish the work that I've started. Thank you.
Thank you each so much for being here today, and thank you to NAMI for hosting this very important forum. I want to leave each of you with this. Our county has an opportunity to meet the needs of everyone when we elect people with the will to achieve quality of life for every worker, every family, and every community. Dignity, support, and a county that works for everyone is within our reach when we all collectively come together and vote for our best interests. We all do better when we all do better. I would be honored to be your next commissioner in position four and earn your vote on May 21. Thank you so much.
All right. I think what we need to, we need to come together, that what we need right now is a multifaceted, service-above-self leader. I have been involved in committees and being a part and a community leader since 2005, City of Oregon City. I have seen how giving people a voice can make a difference. And I'm dedicated to give everybody a voice. I am not okay with not being told things and issues and programs and policies being written without us getting a chance to even be on the inside. I know the county from the inside as an employee. I know it outside as a community leader. I'm also known for bringing people together and not only being somebody that talks about it, but somebody that does it. And I've been involved in standing up for the wildfires, making a difference during the landslide, and using every single platform I have to give people voice and to make them feel valued and heard. And I want to be your commissioner.
Thank you. So I'm Tina Irvine again, and I just wanted to say thank you for having us today. I'm looking forward to taking all of my lived experiences and, quite frankly, my ability to just be likable and doable and get this work done. So thank you again. My name is Tina Irvine, and you can look me up at irvinefororegon.com.
So thank you so much, candidates. If you do not know, if you need to register to vote, if you need to change your voter registration, if you want to change your party affiliation, if you need to update your name or address, next Tuesday, the 30th, is the deadline for all of those things. You should be receiving your, you should already receive probably your voter's pamphlet. You'll be getting your ballots this coming deadline to return your ballot. It has to either be postmarked that day or returned Tuesday, May 21. I want to note, actually, we'd ask if our candidates would actually gather here and stand up. We'd love to take a picture after we're done. You can talk to the candidates one-on-one. There's materials for all the candidates out in the lobby that you can pick up. They've been mentioned a couple of times, but we want to thank two people who know how to do these jobs really well, current Commissioner Paul Savis and former Commissioner Ed Lindquist. Thank you both for being here. So on behalf of NAMI Clackamas, thank you all for being here. And let's give all of our candidates an enthusiastic thank you. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.